You know, and I'm thinking, okay, why didn't they go on? He was, you would have heard your whole discussion. But it just seems like my fur is not less sure. There's some political reason he's gonna use this for lack of time, you know? That was my thought.
Just one up by Oy and ran tuned up. So I thought it was the perfect life for a goal. Cause it's just kind of on the outside of Oy.
Do you want to go as well?
Yeah, I think it's like.
No.
I think it's too much.
Glasses up in their lap. I'm sorry, I thought you should bring your.
Yeah, I'm good.
Take Will.
I'm good. I, well, okay.
Your mother's in there.
I'm gonna drink, I wanna close your best.
You wanna drink a water?
Yeah.
Well, seven o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. Any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, some wish to move on. Judy? Any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, call the question of favor. Let's carry it down. Okay, moving on to the minutes of the last meeting. Any questions, errors, issues? Hearing none, some wish to move on. Richard? Any discussion on Richard's motion? Hearing none, call the question of favor. Let's carry it. Thank you. Moving on to the correspondence. A letter from honorable Rebecca Schultz, Municipal Affairs, on the ICFs.
We designed ours in 2021, so. It'll be a while before we have to update. Did he offer everyone the counties? I'm not sure. I think they got them all completed. They had, I believe.
They have two that were kind of outstanding it, but I think that they, I think they finished them. Oh, okay. Okay, any questions on that one? If not, move on to Grant Hunter's information there.
A lot of info in that.
Yeah, but it is. Like I said, I really appreciate what he does because.
Yeah, he's some good info in here, actually.
And to be honest with you, it's very little political. It's mainly of what's going on, which is kind of nice, too, because you know what? Election right here on the corner, and you kind of think that it's. But he is really good. I hope that he's another successful candidate.
Yeah.
And again, he said that, share it with anybody. Like if you wished to share it with any of your other committees that you belong to or groups, he said, don't feel, he said, this is not hidden information.
Like document.
Yeah. Okay, any questions on grants? Okay, if not, move on to South Coles, South Rose report. Okay, any questions on South Rose? Cole, is it your department?
It is, yeah. We have our quarterly meeting tomorrow.
Oh, it's quarterly? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Isn't sure. Okay, moving on to Communities Bloom. Is there a request for some funding?
So this is already included in the budget, and it's actually left, and they're asking for less this year, so.
I found that quite interesting. I don't see that very often.
They're, they're very conscious of how much that they're gonna spend each year and how much they have in the bank. So it's really nice that between them, the Archives, and the Historical Society, they're, they're really good at all their ground funding, making sure that they ask for what they need.
And a couple of years ago, they asked for none because they still had leftovers. So I mean, it's not, even though we kind of calculated that $3,000, it's not in stone that that's exactly what they're going to ask for. It doesn't vary from year to year. So like you say, it's great to see that they cut back. That way they don't have a ton of money sitting in their bank account either, burning it all in their pockets, so.
We don't need a motion or anything, because it's already in budget, right?
It's already in budget.
It's already in budget. So we will approve the, all the correspondence, if that's agreeable, but.
I'll make that motion.
To approve all the correspondence?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any question on any of those areas? Any question, discussion on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, call the question of favor. Let's carry it down. Okay, moving on to the business, current business, the library. So they've got a request first to add some members.
And I set this up so that you individually do each one or do them all as one. I did have a conversation with Connie about one-year appointments and how it could compromise her board if she has everybody getting to the same time. So going forward, she's going to ask for longer terms. They, they're, in the act, it's very, it allows up to three years. So it's, you know, where we do, when we do terms of reference, a lot of times we'll put in that it is three years rather than up to, so. So this is, yeah, basically replacing Donnelly and Virginia.
Okay.
Can I make the recommendation that council approves the reappointment of Joanna Katon-Bott to the Vulcan Municipal Library Board for a one-year term ending April 24th, 2024? And that the council approves the appointment of Amanda Rogers to the Vulcan Municipal Library Board for a one-year term ending April 24th, 2024? And that council approves the appointment of Janz Popee to the Vulcan Municipal Library Board for a one-year term ending April 24th, 2024?
Okay, thank you. Any questions on Marvis's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question of favor. Let's carry it. Thank you. Moving on to the Water Commission Operating Grant Agreement that needs to be altered.
So council's aware of the amendment. It went to the Water Commission earlier this spring. They had their spring meeting on April 17th. I'm sure the board members can speak to, that they reviewed and sent back that we got notice from CAFI that they had approved. And so it needs a formal motion from council to move forward.
And then was the, that was the amount that we had rebid?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
I will make the recommendation that council approves the amendments to Schedule D of the Current Operations Agreement between Valley Regional Water Services Commission as presented.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on Cole's motion? Any none, we'll call the question of favor. Let's carry it. Okay, Whispering Willows Lane, local improvement.
And I will notice, I didn't, I'm not sure on, on the rest of yours, if it, on the PDF, this map.
Yeah.
Did yours show red?
No.
Mine, on my tablet, it didn't show red.
I've got red.
You've got red?
Yep, mine did.
Mine isn't.
I don't.
Okay, and mine didn't on mine as well. And I'm wondering if this is part of the, some of the stuff that ICOMPAS has been having trouble with. So I apologize if you didn't get it. This is the red sections. You've already reviewed the local improvement plan, know what's going on. So the gist of it is, we sent out notices to all 16 owners. The, we received three back. We received 13 that didn't respond. And as part of that form that went out, it very clearly said on it, if there's no response, that you need in favor due to lack of response, so. So those were sent back. By the deadline, we had only received the three in favor, and the other 13 were in favor due to no response. So being that the month was given for opposition, council can move forward with tendering, if you'd like to move forward. Judy?
I'll make the recommendation that council, based on not receiving sufficient petition and opposition, direct administration, and SEMA, to prepare the final design plans and tender documents for the sanitary sewer infrastructure on Whispering Willows Lane as per the approved local improvement plan.
Great, thank you. Any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question of favor. Let's carry it. Thank you. And moving on to the next one, this vacant underutilized commercial properties.
So everybody's had a chance to read the report. I met with the council, magazine, and discussed it. And really, it, from his report at the last meeting, has reached out to them and done some talking. Before we start putting a bunch of work in it, we wanted council to have a good discussion on, on whether you're, you know, wanna look at any alternatives, whether you're happy with what we have, or just to basically have an open discussion. Wow, probably has more to add to it. I, just over the years, we've seen instances where people buy, you know, cheap commercial property, and, you know, we're, we always hope that they do something with it. But there's a couple of properties in town, for example, that have exchanged hands, and nothing's happened with them. And I, I think I can speak for quite a few ratepayers that they, they don't like seeing buildings just sit there and nothing happen to them. I don't think, as a town, we can't really tell people what to do with them. But we could certainly encourage them to actually do something with it. Or I think the thing that bothers me is, in our town and small villages, people come in and buy things because they're cheap. And it gives them status for whatever they have going on. And as a result, the villages end up with vacant properties. Sometimes these properties even end up in mortgage fraud. But that's a total different subject. But I would just, talking with the mayor of Nanton, they've been working on, you know, trying to get some incentive, you know, instead of people just leaving the buildings and sit vacant, doing nothing. Well, if they are gonna do that, then they're gonna have to pay for it. And because it's really doing nothing for the town, and it's actually, it makes us look bad. It makes it look like a ghost town when there is, people say it's a ghost town downtown. But there is actually a lot of stuff going on, because new businesses coming and going. I think the businesses that are in operation right now are doing a good, good job. It's just, we always see the negative, negative stands up more than the positive. And I would just like to, like to do something to make it happen, to make, to incentivize people to do stuff and not just buy things and hold on to it, just let it sit. If they're gonna do that, then I think it should cost them so much. Cool?
I think it goes hand in hand with, I would say, how some of the business vacant buildings, even how they're presented to look downtown. Some of them, to me, kind of bring the whole downtown look down. I get a lot of complaints about that. And that's, yeah, I think it was hand in hand with that. Like if you're owning a building, it should be up to a certain standard. I'm sure it has bylaws in place that keep that. But it's, it's hard, I guess, for, to enforce that, I guess, or to, I don't know.
It is the one, the harder one to enforce, the, you know.
What level of sense?
What level it exists. And then I, I think that there's 100% positivity on the philosophy of, you know, that a lot of these places, if they do let them deteriorate, their tax roll goes down because the value of the piece of property is less, which, so there is no incentive. We do have an incentive out there, but there are people that would like to open up businesses, but they can't seem to get into the door of trying to get into some of the facility and buildings that are more applicable or, or of a want. So there are some municipalities, you know, like Nanton as an example, that have been looking into different ways. And on the commercial side, you can do it differently than you can on the residential side. So you don't go after the tax dollar. You go after the, the, under the business, you know, the.
You can create a sub-debt category under the business side.
Right, so it's, so this will be easier than somebody buys a lot in, in a residential area and then just sits on it and waits for it to gain in value. So I think the thought of having administration look into different ways, and I'll did lock, like you said, spoke to other municipalities and what they're gonna do. But, you know, it's definitely, I think, a need, that potential to open it up for all of us, the small, small municipalities, of what other ones are doing, and how can we do it to make it work?
And it, it almost, I mean, it's a coincidence, but the federal government's included this year underused housing tax. And I mean, I've received notice on that myself because I have rental properties. And it, they're trying to curb people from, well, they're gonna tax people who buy properties, rental, residential properties, but then they just have them sit there. And so this is kind of like that, but it's for commercial.
Yeah, so, Cole?
Is there a fear that if we change our approach on this, that they walk away from these buildings, quit paying their taxes, and all of a sudden we're stuck with a reclamation project?
Yeah.
I believe there's a couple of businesses downtown that really scare me.
Yeah, no, there is.
But, I mean, if they're not doing anything anyways, you know?
That's right. I mean, whether, yeah, whether it's they're only paying a couple hundred dollars in taxes, or they're indicating, we get them back and then have to, like I said, be, deal with them too, so.
Yeah.
It's kind of one of those catch-22s.
So one of the things to consider is, that was the whole point, and we talked to council, magazine, wrote this. That was the whole point of the development incentive policy. Was that incentive side, when you renovate, you're gonna get your tax backs, and all of those things. It just seems to be underutilized on some of the buildings that are vacant. So because they don't have an active business in there, so they're not actively trying to update things, those sort of things. So what it does is it takes it from the incentive side to the taxation side of trying to recover some costs to make it more feasible that they would do something with the property by having a higher tax rate for not doing anything. And we looked into NAM's briefly, again, not, this was just trying to do some initial research. There's, they're trying to tie to business license and, and activity. So I do know they, they have some hangups on a few issues, but it looks like they've got a nice model started, which, you know, again, why we wanted to have council have a conversation? Because, you know, we can do all the research in the world. If it doesn't have the appetite here to come back, then we don't, didn't want to waste anybody's time.
I, I think personally, it kind of gives our Main Street more of a vibrant look when there are businesses that are open. It draws more people into town. So I think further discussion sounds viable.
This research, I assume that'll be you and Rita doing it, or?
Yeah.
So, I mean, I don't see a massive cost to it other than your time, which, but either way, if we change it or not, I would kind of like to know what other municipalities are doing and what our options are regardless.
Yeah, and I think that that's the recommendation is, is to do some polling and find out what other municipalities have done or could be doing. And, you know, and it, it might spill off into our philosophy on the residential side, too, where, you know, I mean, you know, there's always people that figure that if they, you know, that their property digress, their taxation goes down, but, you know, it does affect the rest of the neighborhoods. And commercial's the same way, but commercial is an easier one to agree than the residential. But it doesn't mean that, you know, down the road, we might be having to face with the same scenario because other municipalities are, too.
Well, I will make the motion to direct administration to conduct research on alternative taxation and incentive options that can be used to encourage the development of new businesses and proper use of vacant and underutilized commercial properties, and report back to council of options for addressing this issue.
Okay, any question on Cole's motion? Hearing none, call the question of favor. Let's carry it.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Looking forward to that information, because I think it's gonna be great to see, so.
And I appreciate you guys passing that motion because we just didn't want to take off running and doing a bunch of stuff if council didn't have the appetite to do that, so.
Okay, and I think, you know, exactly what Cole and Marvis and all those said is, it's been feeling that we've all have felt from ratepayers, and even ourselves probably. You know, you look down and see some of them and say, and, you know, you listen to other communities that are running into the same problem. So if there's something out there that we can do to make it work and then support that, that's great, so. Okay, moving on to the fire department request, for capital funding request to purchase a used piece of equipment.
So council's had a chance to read the report. The committee had a meeting. This was presented to them at the meeting. As you are aware, the next day after the meeting, county council brought it forward and did move forward with the purchase of the truck in light of our agreement with the county. We do split fire apparatus at the recommended rate from the committee. When the inside, when it defaults from the committee, it's at 50/50. So the total cost of the apparatus is, is, you know, for, for what it is at that price is, it was kind of hard to turn down for them. So the committee made recommendation that we share the cost of $30,000. You do have money in reserve for emergency services, purchases, capital purchases. We do have 160 there. And, yeah, the overall reward is there. I know the committee, that Richard and I had some conversations on this. From a committee member's standpoint, you may have some input to this as well.
Yeah, like the truck, I actually have pictures of it. The truck was, I couldn't believe it, five years previous, I mean, they did the turntable and the ladder with 70 grand to fix that. Comes with all the hoses, as you can read, and there's a lot of gimmies on this. $55,000 on the truck, kilometers, very good shape. It was mentioned, Doug had mentioned, the truck would probably benefit the town more than the county because they can get above, you know, the buildings. It's a 75-foot ladder, which is, that's considered small, I guess. But the price was, you couldn't, you couldn't turn that one away. And I think the thinking was from High River as well, that they have a lot of truck over here, they have a newer one, and then I think there's one in Clarins Home. There's a point where there's kind of like a triangle kind of deal. So if, if there's a major thing, you can call them out, everybody helps each other. And I think that was a thinking. I was, interpreted some of it, how it came about. I was, there was no motion at the, at the committee level. Originally, me and Josh, Josh Umpshide was on there, we talked, we thought, we mentioned the lines, we could probably hit the lines behalf of that. And, and then we went, we walked away thinking, okay. And all of a sudden, the next day, the counties bought it. And that's my only problem with this, is I felt like, okay. And they say it's time-sensitive, and I had to ask Doug, you know, what have we got, a week? He goes, oh, yeah. So I said, well, we have a meeting Thursday, this was Tuesday. So I thought, you know, and then we had this meeting tonight, and I thought, okay, I'm, I'm sure we can make this work one way or the other. And, but, like, like Kim had mentioned, we're in a 50/50 split here. So ultimately, it's good for the town, it's a great deal, I think. And I'm not gonna bitch too much, I don't think, because it is a good deal.
Judy?
When, I happened to talk to a county counselor at another meeting we were at, and I said, oh, that'll be really good for anything, you know, like this hotel has three stories. And I said, no, they bought it, they didn't buy it for the town, they bought it to help bail fire. So I mean, I, different, when you said that, I thought, just kidding, somebody told me it was for bail fire. So it will be used, I mean, it would be very helpful in the fields for bail fires because they are stacked. But, but it's gonna benefit us, too, absolutely.
One, one of the big things is also on the training tower side. If you can rent it out and generate some revenue off of it, doing the training of the, on the tower, so.
I think they have training Sunday, actually.
Yeah, it's a good deal. Definitely a plus to do.
Cole?
I think it was a great deal, like Richard says, the limited knowledge I have of fire department stuff. But I had one county counselor reach out to me and kind of give me heads up that it didn't necessarily go through the proper protocol, but there was at least an acknowledgement there that it is kind of a one-off thing, I think, for that to happen that way. So, I mean, I, I'm pretty excited that it was a good, good purchase for both communities, I guess.
A new truck like that's probably a million and a half to $2 million.
Sure.
Absolutely.
30 grands to steal.
Okay, any other questions or thoughts or discussion? Somebody wish to make a motion? Lyle?
I'll make the recommendation that council approves a $15,000 contribution towards the purchase of a 2,000-by-2, 75-foot Superior Quip ladder truck for the Vulcan District Fire Department, with the funds to be drawn from the Emergency Services Capital Reserve.
Okay, any discussion on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, call the question of favor. Repose, seeing none, let's carry it. Okay, moving on to 6-1, the old man, Orsk, regional communication information. Any questions on their January 12th meeting?
I don't know why I'm stuck on the flying club here, maybe I'll.
Okay, hearing none, move on to mayors and reeves of March 3rd. Okay, any questions on that one? No, we'll move on to the flying clubs since Richard's called on that one.
I see, might have got, I'm calling on the.
Those are the two of the coolest, if he's gonna be on anyways. Okay, administratively, we'd just like to point out, under 6.4 on the airport, there is a proposal for development out there that receives support from the committee. And that we're not, we just wanted to make sure, it does say that they've received approval from the town and NAVCAM. No permits have been issued for any of this, there's no applications have been made yet, so. The, we wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, during the meeting, the not quite applicant stated that he, the town had said it was okay, but hadn't, I mean, he didn't have any permits yet. But, because it was a bit of a interesting scenario, because someone else said, well, I'm, I have a X business, and I also have an airplane. I could build a hangar and have X business there, my airplane's there. That's why there was a little bit of a hangup.
Yes, and, and in our land use by law, it was stated, in our land use by law, under discretionary use, it doesn't allow for industrial, like industrial out there. Now it's discretionary, so it has to go with the EFC, go through that process. So it would have to be a good use out there, and really running a business in a place that you can't get water and have to go through all that. It was just worth noting, again, this is just the review of their minutes, but administratively, we wanted to point out, because there's a statement in those minutes that said that it's been approved by the town, and it is not.
Yeah, my neighbor belongs to the flying club, and he told me the town had approved it, and I thought, okay, maybe we didn't need to come through this. But he said, they're encouraging other industrial businesses. And I said, I have a bit of an issue with that, when we've got the industrial park, and then they're paying $25 for 25 years. And so I said, well, just a minute here, hold back. And he says, no, we're, we're going to encourage industrial. And I thought, well, maybe we need to, you know, be, just be very careful what's, what's going up there, I guess.
In looking at it a little bit closer, the, well, it hasn't leased yet, so, so there's no work on it, so.
There, there has been in the past, sorry, Bart, but in the past, there has been suggestions that if there's a airplane in the building, the lease is a dollar a year. But if there, if there is no airplane in the building, then the lease is different.
Well, there's about three of them out there, isn't there, that there's no airplane?
Correct. So, so there has been, been discussions on it, but unfortunately, it's even made it worse since we've turned it over to the flying club to manage it, to, to do that. So, but it doesn't change the taxation philosophy. Like this will not be taxed as a empty hangar. It'll be taxed at a different rate than if it was, so taxation-wise, it, it does, you know, they might think that they're gonna get it for the same amount as what they're paying for a hangar, but they're not.
Okay, that's good to know, thanks.
You know, the taxation, but, hey, go ahead, Bart.
So I have a question, like, and.
So I have a question, like, so you can build a hangar out there next to the airport and have a business?
Yes.
And with no running water, so?
Oh, and that, and that, those are some of the hangups with actually people actually trying to run a business out there, is you couldn't have it open to the public without a washroom, those sort of things. So that's why light industrial goes as discretionary use to the MPC, and the MPC decides whether the application is for it or not.
Well, they could, they could, they can get water.
They could, yes.
It's not, it's not, it's not, these are not service of old lots. But you can get water depending on which lot they pick. And this one here that they picked is probably the easiest ones to get water. But they don't have abilities to have sewer.
Okay, so you can't really run a business without a washer, but?
Right, the original conversations with that, from the airport committee, where they put that stuff, made recommendations to council for the land use by law. The original thoughts were, say, like an airport, to have a mechanic, airplane mechanic working out there and being able to draw, because they have to recertify their planes. So that's why they allowed for light industrial, because they didn't want to just say airport mechanics. So that's why it was put in as discretionary.
With the, and I'm just going to finish. With the proximity to the airport, the actual airport, does it have to go through any kind of federal?
Navcam, that's what the Navcam is.
And third, fine with that.
Yeah, because Navcam is more concerned about building heights and whether it impedes anything with flight. So if you're going to have spotlights on the roof, if it's going to be over twelve feet tall, all of those.
Okay.
Now, ask you a question on the water and that. Do we allow like a pump-out tank, like for sewage?
We haven't yet because the, the only, right now, the only thing that is the field system for the terminal.
Yeah, but if, but that's an option if somebody wants to build it.
They would have to bring up a proposal, and today's, the space you need for a field system, I don't know.
Just a pump-out.
But I mean, no, I mean, that's, but MPC could put those restrictions on that. It would not be a field, it would be a holding tank.
That's what I should say, I should say it's a holding tank.
Correct.
Yeah, because then it would, just a stuck-in truck, and away you go, yeah.
We've had multiple proposals over the years for living residents, all kinds of things out there. At the end of the day, when they get looking at it, it doesn't make sense.
Have we had greenhouses approved and, and?
Really?
Yeah, and so we've had lots of, that tire kickers.
One of the most important things to remember is this is, the town and county own the land, and it's just a lease. So for most folks, unless they've got the cash in their back pocket, they cannot take a mortgage on something on this land.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't build something on somebody else's land.
That's true.
Yeah, so yeah, all, all buildings that are out there are just on that, on that lease. But, but there was a proposal put to the, to the, about changing the use, you know, of the rental. Again, if you have a hangar, a plane in the hangar, it costs you a buck a year. But if there's no plane in the hangar, you're not paying it all in a year for that piece of property, you're paying substantially more, but it has never gone anywhere.
So what, whose name is on the title, is it Town and County?
Town, well.
It's both eight.
It's Tom Grant and David Mitchell. We're gonna, we're gonna have a conversation about that because the names, the names are fleeting on that one.
Yeah.
And you're in good health, so you're going to sign.
Green show number one.
It's Town and County.
And so I just wanted to verify.
Yeah.
Town and County were joint owners.
Thank you.
Originally, Nav, the government, the federal government, didn't give it to, that's why there was personal names on there. And then it did change, because originally, the federal government were the, no, we were just lease holders.
Yeah, it was a, it's very similar to owning a church.
Yeah.
The board, the board and trustees' names went on it. And of course, Dave Mitchell, I can name them all, but they're.
They're all old DCs, but me.
I forget that change, Dave.
I know.
You noticed on, you'll notice on my admin report, I had a meeting with North and Company. That was one of the things we discussed, actually.
I mean, it's nice to have more than one, do you want to?
Well, and you know, unfortunately, I think Kim's comment, exactly like it is, you know, churches originally, they couldn't own the property, so the trustees of the churches owned the property.
They're becoming very hard to sell because the same thing happens. They go, when they go and pull the registry, no one is left alive on the credit.
Yeah, and so it picks huge problems. So, so slowly, those things are being rectified as, as time goes on, but. Okay, so any other comments on the flying clubs minutes? Appreciate you bringing, getting them in to us. Okay, moving on, on to, sorry, MPC?
Okay, any question on MPCs? If not, somebody wish to move the council or the reports? Richard? Any discussion on Richard's motion? Hearing none, call for questions in favor, opposed, none, let's carry on. Thank you.
Beautiful.
I know, it was very easy. Okay, verbal reports, councillor Magnus?
Well, as you can see from our previous minutes here, we had, had the MPC meeting, where we started changing the use of the building coming into town. And then we had the, the flying club meeting. You may have seen that they're got a, they were, they were approved a grant to get the surfacing on the runway. And then when they got it, they, they have to get tenders up again. I mean, they got it approved, but somehow they thought it was good to go. But through the grant, the county has to send it over for tender. Otherwise, that was good. And then, this morning, I had a little incident. Just, I just warned some people that there were a couple large dogs at large running around. They took a run at me, so I took a run at them, which hindsight may not have been the best thing to do, but they took off, which has brought up some concern regarding pupils letting their dogs run at large. Well, dogs got out, maybe they could better, need to be better contained. But I've also brought up in the past, there's people in our town that don't, that are afraid to walk their dogs around the dog park, because there's people who don't think their dogs need to be on a leash. Some of them are very well-trained, but mine is not one. That's why she's always on a leash, because she sees a squirrel or a cat, and she's gone. So this evening, when I was taking off my dog for walk, I had several people come up and talk to me. And there's, there's been suggestions that perhaps it's, we need to look at the bylaw enforcement again, and what, what we need to do, because some, this has been going on for years, and some, and it's just not hidden with some people. Gabby was in today, I think, Justin's, the dogs, dogs were captured and contained today. Yeah, and Justin was going to talk to Gabby tomorrow. And it's just, it's been brought up that maybe this is something that council should look at as, as enforcement on that, whether it's fines or what, I don't know what alternatives we have to do, but maybe it's something that we need to, to discuss, because it's something to consider.
And it might be something that we should contemplate, suggesting again, too, is to change that on some days, not work from eight till, to four, or whatever her time is to show up at six o'clock in the morning, because I think Lyle's got a good point there. There are some people that open their gates, or open their things, deliberately let their animals run wild. And then they wait until they come home, and, and so they're not on the hours that she is working generally. And so we might contemplate that, because there, there are people that deliberately do that with their animals. They're, they have them locked up during the nine to five, but, you know, five to, five to nine in the morning, they're left out, run loose still.
And I know that they addressed this on, we announced, we had a schedule, she was in Saturday, and they dealt with the same dogs on Saturday, and they've been in, so.
Yeah, Cole?
Yeah, and we, doing yard work on the weekend and stuff, my kids are playing in the backyard. Most dogs were kind of in the proximity. I didn't see them, but my kids weren't allowed to play in the backyard. You shouldn't have to fear that, right?
And unfortunately, I understand, you know, the, the one-offs, you know? It happens, I mean, crap happens. But, but when it's starting to happen three times a week, or four times a week, same, same people, the same animals, you know, sooner or later, you need to do something either to detain, you know, your animal, or, or we have to do something to make sure that they pay the price.
Well, like, could you know the fines for the most recent incident were fairly significant on this one? Because it's their, their goal, I think.
Well, and there is a difference between like your poodle, or whatever it is, it's this big, and big dogs that are capable of really vicious things. I'm not saying they're violent at all, but, I mean, when you have big dogs roam in town, it's, it's bad things can happen really quick.
Yeah, the friendly unaggressive dog that's got a collar on it with spikes on it, you know, doesn't really look like it's a friendly unaggressive dog, when, you know, the collar itself looks like it's, you know, maybe that's because it's too friendly, and.
I think that's the thing, if you don't know the dog, and most people don't know the dog. People are scared of my dog, because she parks all the time, while she's parking the tail wagging, so I, whatever. But I'm, I'm just concerned that there's going to be an incident where, like, yeah, after I walked, you know, my neighbor who's senior has problems, he walks around, is something going to happen to him? Or is it going to happen to a kid? Or do the dogs get out, and there's coyotes there, and there's, we've got a big mess? And who's going to be responsible for that? It's, whatever.
I'll tell you, it's, you brought it up, and thank you for, you know, and Kim's made note of it, so. Anything else?
No.
It's great, appreciate that, thank you. Moving on to councillor Vol.
I had two meetings, the water commission, and I'll let Cole talk to that one on the seventeenth, and then the fire commission on the eighteenth. And I'll just, of course, the fire department is looking to swap three trucks and buy one. So we had quite an interesting conversation with that, but there was some very good conversation about it. So they want to get rid of fire truck two seven one, rescue twenty-seven, and the truck two seven four. So replacement, they would like to buy our, what they call a custom truck, order it to what you want. And it would be probably a million and a half, or a million two to a million four. And it's going up all the time. A custom truck over an ordered truck is about four to five hundred thousand more, because you're customizing that. So with twenty-seven, two seven four, two seven one, they're roughly worth on trade-in right now about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So a custom, you're looking at, say, a million bucks difference. A, the truck, just that, an ordered truck, Doug had mentioned, he looked at some newer used ones, and something that was five hundred thousand a year and a bit ago is now three quarters of a million, because everything's going up. And it takes two to four years to order a truck. One place in Quebec, I guess they just said, we're not taking any more orders. They do fifty a year, and they just, I guess they've got years of them to build, so. So I asked about maintenance, so two seven one, which is the older one, they're a little bit nervous about that one. They're worried about breakdowns on that one, that's, it, this is, it has to be recertified next year. So it used, it did, in three years, ten calls. Maintenance on it was twenty-two thousand nine thirty, twenty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine bucks. Two seven four, in three years, did seventy-six calls, maintenance was twenty-seven thousand forty-three dollars. Twenty-seven, Rescue Minute twenty-seven did sixty-one calls in the same time with thirty-three hundred and eighty-six bucks in maintenance. It's a lot of money. So we had quite a discussion with over wants and needs kind of thing, you know? I mean, you look at twenty-seven rescue, and it does sixty-one calls, and it's only thirty-three hundred and eighty-six bucks in maintenance. I mean, yeah, so a custom, just to give you, a custom cab has airbags, things like that, which I almost got the feeling the other one doesn't, if you order one. I found that kind of weird. So we're looking at, like I say, right now, demand for fire trucks is so high, it's unreal. And so they're going to be looking at that, and, you know, I, I did appreciate Shane and a lot of his comments, because, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot of money. It's a lot of money, and we're on that fifty fifty split, a few fifty fifty or sixty forty?
Sixty forty, well, and depending on the use of the vehicle, the committee makes the recommendation. If it doesn't fall under.
Yeah. Especially if they're going to replace the rescue, because rescue's strictly, strictly a rule.
Yeah. So like, to buy a standard truck is probably a half million at least, after we do trade-in, say. To buy a custom is, is a million, you know, after you do your trade-ins. So they're going to be, they've come and they're talking about this seriously. They, they want to, I mean, there's going to be a lot of conversation yet, but we'll be expecting the latter here in the next while, I'm sure.
Cole? When you're talking about costs on maintenance on those units, is it based strictly on parts and labor? Or is there other factors, like it costs this much money to certify it?
Well, certification, I think you have to certify them every year, I think, every year, every three.
They bought the equipment to certify it.
Okay, okay, so then, yeah, and that's kind of, that, I think in, on twenty, I think a lot of it is to do with pump breakdown, things like this. I'm not sure that includes tires, oil, and, you know, and that, but it's, it's a lot of money. And I mean, you look at the cost of recertification and maintenance, so on all three units, you're under twenty thousand dollars a year to maintain them, you know, over three years, I should say. You know, so it's a lot of money, it's going to be a big decision, you know? It's going to be a huge decision.
Just to comment on that, that's what the committee sold it, and Richard's done a good job bringing it to council. That's what the committee does, makes recommendations to, from members of large in our community, our councillors, so.
I think the, one thing that Richard has brought up too, though, is that, you know, we have, we had a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in the bank account to replace this piece of apparatus, and we took fifteen thousand out just tonight. So we've got a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars approximately in there, and within.
Twenty, twenty-five in the ledger, to go in.
Yeah, so, you know, we're within a period of time, so on Wednesday, we need to think highly of how we're going to potentially, you know, do this if it's over a two-year, or a four-year, or a three-year.
Well, like, it's two to four years to order this thing. And how this works is if you, municipality says, I want a fire truck, and they say it shows up this date, it shows up, they want a check. It's not like the, you don't have to put money down, they want that check, because they know it's government money, right? So that's how that works, I found that quite intriguing.
I'll have some information for you on Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything else, Richard?
No, I'm good.
Great, thank you. Moving on to councillor Stederson.
Get ready. April thirteenth at three thirty, it has a team's meeting with the building committee, Ashley from Minister Nixon's office, Robert Craig, Director of Planning and Reporting, George Schneider, Capital Grants Management, and Derek Lees, our consultant. and Derek Lees, our consultant from Marcus Foundation. So the H, AHPP, which is Affordable Housing Partnership Program, uh, new grants will be opening once the election's done and depending on who gets in, um, if it's, uh, so we'll just have to wait for that. So we went over what they're looking for because they're the ones that are approving the grants. So they were really very helpful. They want us to get our grants done correctly. They're supposed to be in, all, we want to get ours in before June thirtieth and we still will. That was the deadline, but, uh, we've heard, I don't know if it's official yet, but the ministers have told us that they're going to extend that to end of September. So, but we still want to get ours in on our timeline because that just gives more people a chance to get in there. So we want to be, make sure our ducks are in a row. And, uh, we were informed that we could start doing an asset transfer from the government over to Marcus Foundation. Like the lodge is in the Marcus Foundation name. So there's phase two and three, um, two has eight units, um, phase three has six units. There's the R and D house, which is the Whirlin' Native House. And Carmen Manor, there's Roman Champions. So we thought, and they want, they don't want you to ask, cause it's a lot of assets for them to let go of. So they said, if you recommend one at a time, so we'll probably start with phase two. So we'll be doing that when we do our business plan. We'll do the appendix to get that started to be done. They will put a restrictive covenant on it for twenty years. And they will, um, give a capital maintenance grant for the buildings. And so the, the more renovations you do, then the less money you're gonna get for rent. You've already done a lot of work, so Laura's, well, we won't tell you what our renovations are. So anyhow, that was, um, it was a very, um, enlightening meeting, so that was good. April fifteenth and sixteenth, we did the five hours of reviewing applications. We were, had interviews for design architecture for the potential new, new lodge. There was eight applicants and we shortlisted it to four. So we, um, we all did that on our own time there. Uh, April seventeenth, uh, victim services meeting at the Tri Services Building. We reviewed our twenty twenty three, twenty four training budget. Cause first will be taken over March thirty first, twenty twenty four. Uh, discussion on society bylaws, what, with what happens next, you know? How can we protect our trauma units? So we had a lot of discussion on, you know, what can we do going forward? Um, we just want to keep our discussions open with the government to end ourselves and our people working for us. Our AGM is set for May fifteenth at nine o'clock at the Tri Services Building. Anybody who won't come to that, you're welcome to come. We went into Coles for twenty minutes and no motions were made. April eighteenth, I attended the MPC meeting and I just had to give clues to Jerry Hillier, who bought roses for the three women that were on the, being one of them. So that was very sweet of him. Not that we didn't bug him since that one time stamp, but. Um, I missed the volunteer appreciation, unfortunately. I wanted to get there, but, um, I had another meeting that night and it happened on over the agenda. So unfortunately I missed that. We did have the golf AGM. Um, we had two that wanted to sit down. Tyler Wolf wanted to sit down, step down, and so did Fred Pratt. But, um, we only had one step up and that was Chad Purley. So we're very happy to have Chad on, on the board. Everything went smoothly. There was only one complaint and, um, one disgruntled member. And we explained why we did what we did and, um, everything was good. So that's the first time it hasn't been a lot of, a lot of questioning on what the board was doing. April twentieth, I had a building committee. We went to Calgary to do the interviews for the design architecture. We, um, were there from nine to five. Um, we shortlisted it to two people. Our project manager is going to be doing, um, uh, reference checks. And, um, the only thing that we, the one we really liked was two hundred thousand more than the other ones. So, uh, we just wanted to make sure references was, because the other company was a little bit smaller. So we just want to make sure we're doing our due diligence. So we should have that information soon. Already said that. So that was, um, that was a, a long day, but the, the last group was, uh, very jovial. So it kind of ended it good. Um, Kelly and myself are pushing to get an announcement out to the councils and communities as soon as possible. Tomorrow night is a Marcus Foundation meeting and I think we're gonna approve the announcement. So hopefully we can let everybody know what's going on. Um, also on the April twentieth, I had an FCSS meeting at seven. I'm just so impressed with the team that we have down there. The reports were really something to read and you can, they're doing so much. And this is a really busy time. Claire, then we've only got one person, that's Claire, that's, uh, our food bank coordinator and seniors. And she did, has done a hundred and forty four income tax on her own in the last few weeks. So, I mean, hoodles to them. I mean, if you're ever around on Thursday night, go downstairs into that youth center. It's just amazing how many people, parents and kids are down there. They feed them supper and they play games and have, there's so many things to do down there. It really is something to see. Dawn and Lori worked hard to get the annual report done, so I think you've received that. You haven't received that?
They haven't, they haven't sent me a message on it yet.
Oh, I think they're, because it has to go to somebody else to get approved first, right? So you should be getting that here shortly. All staff are now trained in the mental, uh, mental health first aid as well as the first A C P R course. So we had a new, uh, have a new receptionist and she's been in there beautifully. Claire is going to be retiring the end of June, so we will need to train a couple of people to help do these income taxes. And, um, we'll have to, we'll be hiring somebody else then, so it's, we're gonna be sorry to see her go. April twenty first, I had a bill, um, building committee meeting with, um, the project management team and functional programming team. You'll find out all the names here shortly. This was to go over the plans of the needs, so what, um, and we learned a lot of things from listening to all these design and architectures, but, you know, they have, a lot of them had great ideas. We said, okay, we want like resting spots. You know, if it's a long corridor, you should have a resting spot where seniors can sit. There should never be a dead end, so if you take the long corridor, all of a sudden you don't know where you are and it was a dead end. So lots of, you know, things that you don't even think about. So I'm gonna be there first, so I want to make sure it's done well.
Well, you're getting on in.
And things like the exerciser, because PDL does have exercise equipment. So, you know, things like that, that there's so much to think about, so, um, I'm gonna skip all that. Uh, but we also have included Gloria on, uh, on some of these calls because, I mean, that affects where she's working, so. Anyhow, and today, uh, we had the FCSS spring meeting that was put on by, um, Kelly Nelson's district. We're in the Calgary Bold District and Kelly's on the FCSAA, which supports all the FCSs in Alberta. And, um, so our staff did a lot of work and it went really, really, really well. We had the room, the conference room at the Health and Wellness in the hospital, but it's not a joint agreement yet, so it's supposed to be there, but we were there. Uh, we had Andrea Day to speak on what, um, her and her husband went through. They were one of the ones that had to jump the ship on the coast of Concordia. And, uh, when we, I heard that we were getting her, I talked to Dave Keely and asked him if he wanted to come. And he says, I don't care what I'm doing that day, I will be there. And, uh, Andrea was there and I got there this morning with the podium. And, um, I told her that Dave Keely was gonna be here and she said, you have somebody in your community that was on the coast of Concordia? Because the Canadian embassy gathered all the Canadians together, but David got on, like these people got off, they swam and they got off out of by a rocky cliff and they had to climb this rocky cliff. And so they rescued people, saw them by their lights on their life jackets. So they, I think a lot of Canadians were there, so somehow David got missed. But so it was US embassy and Italian embassy that helped him. So she was just in, so emotional and David was so excited. But it was really nice they got together afterwards. So, um, the girls did a lot of work. After lunch, we had a round table of all your successes and challenges. It was, we all have a lot the same, but, um, of course cities, we had cities. We had Banff, Canmore, Calgary, Erdre, Hazard, Claire's home and everything in between. So, um, we were really pleased with the, with the numbers. The FCSS AA president was there and he talked about, um, they've made sure that all levels of government know about FCSS. He said, your M L A doesn't know about FCSS, there's something wrong because they should all know how important they are. And the victim services, if they take that over, there's gonna be a lot more stuff put on FCSSs. So he just wanted us to know that, um, um, FCSS is community driven. It's, uh, forty seven thousand eight hundred volunteers in Alberta, over one million man hours, twenty million dollars of labor hours and one million people served. It was a very inspiring, great, great networking day, so. Sorry, that took so long.
Cole, any questions for Judy on any of that? Great, thanks. We're looking forward to all the information that's gonna be coming forward to. Great, thank you. Moving on to councillor Muurka.
Um, I had a meeting, I didn't have the minutes yet, um, April eleventh for the Elder Abuse Council. And then, um, April twelve, the library had the AGM, but I did miss that. The volunteers, uh, dinner, uh, last week on the Wednesday, it was the nineteenth. Sandy's daughter got the Heart of the Community Award and Laurie Gare received the Ron Palma Award. And, um, the, uh, youth of tomorrow, leaders of tomorrow, leaders of tomorrow. I believe there were seven, um, individuals that were nominated, both elementary and high school. None from junior high this time, but, um, and then two were awarded, um, uh, the big awards. And, um, it was nice to see such a great turnout from the community. And showing how many volunteers that we do have in our community. And I think half of them weren't there, you know, that I know of, that really give back to our, uh, town and our county as a whole. So I just wanted to mention that. And on a personal note, I want to mention, uh, because we do talk, um, quite often in our community about mental health. I do happen to know that in Calgary, up near the Jubilee, just, um, on sixteenth, near sixteenth Avenue, they have opened a new walk-in mental health clinic. It's called The Summit. And it is open from morning, like I think eight or nine o'clock in the morning until ten or eleven o'clock at night, seven days a week. Um, it can be children, youth, families, anyone, but it's walk-in. And it's in, um, combination with the Children's Hospital that they're trying to work together and have a place, um, in somewhere, at least in Southern Alberta, that if somebody is in distress and, um, needs help with their mental health, that they can go there. It is a long drive from Vulcan, but at least if that, if there's that information, if somebody needs it, it is open and you can just walk in. So you're not waiting three weeks to be seen if you're in crisis. So that's all I have to say.
Can I just, do you know, like, is there psychologists there?
Yes, yes.
That's good to know.
Yep, there's, um, psychologists, psychiatrists, um, and good, good support teams. So, and it just opened, I think this past month.
Okay, any questions for Barbara? Great, thank you. Councillor Dunham.
Um, I had one meeting, April seventeenth, it was the water commission meeting. B E O was there to give their audit presentation. They had kind of told us that there's been new legislation involved that made their audit more, like expanded, I guess would be the word. They have to, uh, audit risk factors now that they never had to do before. So it's kind of been a cost in time, whatnot. But, um, out of their audit, it was a clean audit, so that was pretty good news. And, uh, we, uh, we kind of discussed some of the chemical vendors and some of their tactics to get sales. Have been quite aggressive and I feel bad for Kathy and Stu for having tolerated that. So we kind of gave them our support on that and told them that they should maybe, they definitely do not need to be abused, that's for sure. So I'll leave that up to them, but that was pretty much the extent would be.
Great, yeah, we'll look forward to seeing their financial statement.
I received them today, actually. So, uh, anybody that wants the financial statements for the, uh, water commission, I can email them. Let me know.
Thank you very much, thank you.
That's a lot for everybody, so I'll send them off.
I think I have.
Yeah.
Anything else, Cole?
I have gotten a couple complaints about the road that goes from the lodge to Main Street. But, oh, I've noticed, um, the town has done some work to it, but.
That was one of the ones that we did discuss that potentially could be one of the ones that we could.
Yeah.
Do something with.
For Wednesday.
Wednesday.
We'll have a conversation, but I'm also, I, I have a quote for that.
Yeah, there's two or three.
It has a lot to do with where you guys allocate funds.
Unfortunately, you know, that's the worst thing about our community is Mother Nature really does pay toll on it with the freeze thaw. And, uh, that's the unfortunate thing about soil cement and, uh, our whole community, other than the newer streets. We've been living on it and we're gonna pay the price and toll on it, so. Sometimes even good gravel road would be better than sometimes some of the other ones. But I'm sure the people that live along it wouldn't appreciate it. Anything else, Cole?
No.
Great, any questions for Cole? Thank you very much. Most of mine have been SEWA, I had a SEWA executive meeting and then a SEWA, um, meeting in Brooks. It was a strategic planning session. Um, we did get notification that we had applied for two hundred thousand dollars from the A C P grant and weren't successful. Unfortunately, you know, we're the second one in, but the first one out. So, you know, we talk about, you know, being in there early, sometimes is an advantage, but sometimes it is not an advantage at all if it's oversubscribed and, and, um, they don't agree that your project is, fits the category as high as it should, even though the base said that it does. But, you know, it falls off the, off of the pile. So anyway, we didn't, weren't successful for the two hundred thousand, but, uh, we had a couple of our, one of our board members and, um, and Cherry went and visited with Newell County and they had their board, board meeting. And, um, they approved to come up with the two hundred thousand, you know, minimum fifty and up to two hundred and fifty thousand if we needed. So that's, that's good to hear that, uh, you know, Newell County sees the advantages of this facility being in their, in their footprint. And, um, they too were ones that applied for A C P grant for another project. And, um, again, we're told that they were in there, were very early and, um, stood a really great chance of being there and unfortunately weren't successful. So, you know, the philosophy of the bureaucracy is that it's oversubscribed and, uh, your project just doesn't, uh, meet the criteria to the fullest extent that somebody else's did, so. I too was going to go to the, um, volunteer supper, but I had three meetings that I could have attended. I was going to go to Gulf Coast one too, but I ended up going to another one instead. So it, uh, it was unfortunate. I would love to have gone to both those, those two, just to be a fly on the wall with the AGM and also the, um, the volunteer supper. I, I think that it's great to see that we do, um, participate in that as much as we can to thank our volunteers. And like Barbara said, there's a hundred thousand of our volunteers that never show up for recognition, but it is nice to see that we do recognize a few of our, our youth that's coming up. And then also some of the ones that have been involved in the community for years, like, so. Uh, this coming week, we, again, same thing with your audit. We have our audit coming up for the Waste Authority, so after Wednesday night, it hopefully will get approved. I have issues with auditors saying, well, we can't distribute it earlier than your meeting, you know, and bring it to your meeting. And I said, well, maybe you shouldn't be one of the ones to put your name forward when, uh, we're looking for an auditor. You know, if you can't supply it a day before or two days before the meeting, you know, how are we gonna go through a twenty six page audit statement and, and, and understand it fully? So when auditors tell me that, um, that's like any years, I'm not as big a fan of them as they sometimes should be. But, and then on Friday, I have my SEWA board meeting. And, um, so we'll discuss the outcomes. And so we'll discuss the outcomes of the planning session that we had in Brooks. And I think that's about it for me. Does she have some questions? If not, something wish the council reports, Richard? Any discussion on Richard's motion? Very none, I'll call question on the paper. It's carried, thank you. Okay, moving on to the activities, our administrative report.
As you can see, that the activity report, all but the finishing up on the planning for the committee, the whole meeting. So we're just finalizing those and hopefully be able to have everything for you on and we'll hopefully not keep you all day, but we're going to keep you a portion of it. So unless there's any questions on any of the outstanding on my CAO report. Obviously, we've got the financial statements from our last meeting. We got those back to our auditor and submitted to the province. I assisted the FCSS director with the business ID. I had to go in because we were both administrators, had to go ahead and change some information so that she could access the annual reports. Said they're working on those, which is good. Done a ton of work on the operation budget. You guys all, yeah, there's not very many things highlighted, but a lot of things have changed. So so we've done quite a bit of work on that. Received an update first from SEMA Plus on the industrial issues and sports courts. So I may as well talk about the industrial issues right now. It's pretty smooth. Stu and I haven't had with them today, but you got most of them resolved. But there is two areas that I do want council to be aware of. So there was a mistake made on the contract. And it was simple as a cubic meter to a square meter. So instead of a two, it was a three on a great big document, but it makes all the difference in the world because nine thousand cubic meters is way more than nine thousand square meters. So the square meters for reeling topsoil over the roads and all of that area was only nine thousand square meters. Supposed to be nine thousand cubic meters, differences as well as sixty thousand dollars in the contract. So talking to SEMA, that was a mistake, how are we going to deal with this? We are under budget on the entire project. So the change to sixty, the explanation is, yes, it was a mistake. The contract should have been at that price anyway, because if they had the right number, they would have, the cost would have been more. So it is a mistake, that's why we keep a contingency. So we'll be into forlaying that topsoil as per the contract will be to our contingency by fifteen thousand dollars.
So they're going to, we have to pay fifteen thousand dollars more. It seems as well, right?
No, we, yes, well, yes, no, we have to pay sixty thousand dollars more. But we'll be fifteen thousand dollars into our contingency.
Okay, so there's a problem with this. We paid them good money to do this. And they screwed up and now we have to pay for it. I have a problem with that. You know, they screwed up, we paid them a good dollar to do this. That bugs me. That really bugs me.
That's what we had our meeting about today. And so the other thing squared away with Blackie, they're they are going to lay the soil into the head again with that caring, unless council does not want a quick contingency.
I think that's a discussion we can have on Wednesday when it comes to our budget area.
I could discuss it right now.
Well, partly because I, you know, I think that there's advantages to not putting the topsoil back onto the road. Because if the sale of lot comes now, all of a sudden, we have to strip that topsoil off the road and then bring the road back up to to road standard. And so do we want to spend that extra sixty thousand dollars? Or do we want to just say, no, fine, it wasn't in the price, leave the dirt in the pile and and leave the dirt road as a dirt road and not as a dirt field? So there's pros and cons, and I agree with what you're saying there, Richard, that I think that but I think that's an area where we need to go in camera to discuss the philosophy of what we want to do of our engineering and what direction we want to go. Because theoretically, you know, we're in contract with them and we don't want to, you know, breach our contract with them on project. But, you know, it might be an item what we need to discuss. And I think that's partly why I was suggesting that we talked about on Thursdays, on Wednesdays, because it is a budgetary issue and and then the history of, you know, potentially getting a new engineer and the damages and disadvantages of both of that. So I think it's something that we need to discuss.
To address Richard's comment on that, it's on me as well. I'm the one that puts out the tender documents. So I just did it there as well. So that is there are tender documents, they draw them on our behalf, but we're the ones that issue them. So that's as much as he is, you know, because I didn't catch it.
Nice. We'll talk about this Wednesday, because I can get heated on this one.
No, but that's that's.
That's fine, that's fine, we'll do it Wednesday.
But it's just that, you know, I don't want to do something that's going to create some other issues. But I think you're right, I think it's an issue that we need to to, you know, put some more thought into it too. So I mean.
So with that, there was also a discussion with Stu when we were on site. There is some extra pit run that's out there. And we had had a conversation about those. So you guys will have to pitch any of those two lots that we sold for the small plots. And so that area where that road goes through there, that pit run is located on the lot right next to it. So the discussion, rather than stockpiling the pit run, is to have it moved in and we'll just redo the base work for the road in that area. So the additional cost of that would be fifteen thousand dollars for them to do it.
Fifteen?
Fifteen.
One and five?
One and five.
Okay.
Yeah, so really what we're looking at is overall, if council is in agreeance. Well, and again, council's always kind of left that to administration unless there's going to be a bigger discussion. But we're looking at going for thirty thousand dollars into our two hundred thousand dollar contingency to finish up that project. So we did get Blackie, it was a very interesting conversation, actually. Blackie thought that we were trying to add things on top of the project. They thought, well, because we've done things under budget and we hadn't used our contingency yet, they were just, we were going to get them to do all this extra work. And it was truly not that. It was this was this was not put in there properly. And the only thing we had was the extra gravel and they were, once we had to sit down, they were. So that's where we're at with that. Back to my report, I didn't get the information for the sports courts. I got the new drawings, but I did not get the updated budget estimates until late Friday. So I still haven't got the new budget estimates, they were supposed to be today, but they're just about done. So hopefully, most of the next meeting. Again, I already touched on the library, municipal affair, we had some MSI reporting clarification. It was a two hundred dollar over the allocation that was reported. It was just because that project was half finished. The, again, reviewing the industrial project documents for the quantity change issue. I spent a ton of time reviewing those documents, making sure that the information we were getting was accurate and that the information that we were providing was accurate as well. So getting everything ready for the committee, the whole. Met with Cole and Stu and Chris at the arena. We've had some councillors being approached by user groups about dressing rooms again. So we wanted to kind of get ahead of the game, have a quick conversation, make sure that everybody's on the same page. So almost like the council in the near future will get a request from the user groups and we'll start to put together a plan and bring to council for good quality information, making sure that everybody's on the same page with that. So that was, I think it was a pretty good meeting. We stumbled around the building and kind of figured out what what could be done, what couldn't. So hopefully that will come forward fairly quickly and make a plan. And had some community member inquiries, well-franchised, be title information, those sort of things. Address some council members concerned, fire being a big one. There's a lot of information from council, council hold meeting that held with taxation, obviously, on reaching out to them. So Amanda's completed your transmission to finance manager. And I met with Northern Company to the industrial purchase agreement. And it looks like we've got that, I think, just will finalize. They have to have our real estate agent have provide some input on whether he can use that as a condition on his existing documents as well. But we, you know, we need to put the final touches on it. And yeah, SEMA on project update. Did that virtually.
Okay, any questions for any of those? If not, need a motion to file with the administration force? Lyle? Any question on Lyle's motion? Very none, I'll call a question on the paper. It's carried, motion to adjourn. Hi, Barbara, thank you.
How cool.
Does anybody want to phone well?
Yeah. I'm not sure whether Cole's going to get his name in on that one or just just being.
I've been warned by Will.
Yeah, stay away from.
Yeah, that's my deal.
All in favor? Thank you very much, everybody. We are officially adjourned. Thank you. See you all on Wednesday.
Wednesday at ten. AM.
Is this Andrea Davis, one of you some around here?